Good evening. Good evening, everybody. This is the May 3, 2018 meeting of the Northampton City Council. My name is Ryan O'Donnell. I'm the City Council President and I'll be presiding tonight. Let me first announce the audio and video recording of these proceedings. And then we'll start with a period of public comment. It's an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any issue they wish. I'll only ask a couple of things. First, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And also remember that we're prohibited by our rules from engaging in a back-and-forth with you. It's your time to give your opinion to us. I'll begin with the sign-up sheet, and then after that, anyone who's not signed up will be welcome to stand up and speak too. The first person is Mike Riffenberg. Oh ma'am, don't worry about that. I'll call on you.
Okay.
Yep. And Mr. Riffenberg, if you have your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Mike Riffenberg.
Excuse me.
252 Lower Road, Deerfield. And I'm the publisher of the Daily Hampshire Gazette. I'm here tonight to represent the people of Northampton and the same people who elected you to represent them and the city's partners who use public notices in our paper to do business with the city as a result of their findings. I first wanted to address a couple of comments that were made at the last council meeting. First, there was a comment about the anachronisticness of the Daily Hampshire Gazette. And so my apologies for not educating our community better about the newspaper and the way that it's delivered to the many readers of the Daily Hampshire Gazette, both in print and online. And so I invite the council to come take a tour of the Daily Hampshire Gazette and learn more about that. There were some observations made about cost, attendance of hearings, alternative methods of delivery, and really, I think this discussion is about access of information for the people. I sent each of you a link to the homepage for public notices on GazetteNet.com. I hope you had a chance to review it. Use the search function, learn more about the digital delivery of public notices we provide in addition to the print delivery. And two weeks ago, I read from a script and shared with you four elements required of public notice publishing to maintain its integrity. First, they must be published by a neutral and independent party. Second, they must be accessible to the public. Third, they must be capable of being archived in a secure and accessible format. And fourth, their publication must be capable of being verified and authenticated by the publisher. So I leave you with those four elements again. And once again, I ask you to vote no on both ordinance changes to eliminate newspaper legal notice requirements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, I have Margot Shocket Green.
My name's Margot Shocket Green. I live at 85 Vernon Street in Northampton. And I would like to talk to you all about the resolution that you will shortly be reviewing. I think it's very important to note how much work the Youth Commission put into this. And I'm the chair this year, but I know last year as well, there was a lot, a lot of thought put into it and how it would positively impact the community and how we think it would benefit the community, the school system, everyone sitting here today, and democracy as a whole. I think it's very important to bring a new perspective into city matters and voting matters. And I think that we could positively change every, positively impact every decision that people older than us are currently able to make. I think that we have, we have opinions that deserve to be heard and we have a new perspective that could positively impact the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Ma'am, I know you wanted to speak. Would you like to be next?
Okay.
Feel free to come up and give your name and address for the record.
Catherine Marsh, 9 Prospect Heights, Northampton. I've been working hard with my partner the last few years, I said months, getting the information out about gas leaf blowers. The exhaust from one gas leaf blower is much higher in nitrous oxide than from one car. One gas leaf blower creates as much air pollution as 50 sedans. They are spraying oil and hydrocarbons, which we inhale into our lungs, and they're carcinogens. The noise is horrific. Depends on where you live. Some places are worse than others. One leaf blower will produce 100 decibels at close range and 75 at 50 feet. Often, two or three are going at several houses at once. The quality of life would be greatly improved here by banning them, except for, you know, like big parks, as they have, as they have been in all of the state of California and several places in Mass, Massachusetts such as Lincoln, and so it's starting all over in New Jersey. I'm tired of hanging out in the library or the Cooley Dickinson Hospital waiting room day after day. Will you help me protect our health and hearing? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to provide public comment at this time? No? Well, if not, then we'll enter our formal session here, and I'll ask all of the City Council to be called.
Councilor Bidwell.
Here.
Councilor Cline.
Present.
Councilor White.
Here.
Councilor Klein.
Here.
Councilor LeBarge.
Present.
Councilor Murphy.
Here.
Councilor Nash.
Here.
Councilor O'Donnell.
Here.
And Councilor Shiera.
Seeing as there are no public hearings and no updates from me, are there any updates from committee chairs today? Are there any recognitions or one-minute announcements from councilors? Councilor LeBarge.
Thank you. I would just like to announce a public forum, and it's sponsored by me, City Councilor Mary Ann LeBarge, the City of Northampton and Just Healthy LLC. May 14, 7:00 PM, Arkay Finn Ryan Road School. The reason why I'm doing this, because the property, Willard's Gravel Pit, was put up for auction. And we have had some very interested people on two parcels of the gravel pit. And I've had since last year, working with Wayne Fiden and many residents in Woodland, Cardinal Way, preserving the open space in that site area. And it's absolutely beautiful. So there is some movement happening, and I'm working with Wayne and the Planning Department to have this open public hearing. I want the transparency and the communication. 375 letters have been sent to Abutters, and we want beyond that. Plus, I am placing signs at certain corners. I've talked with my residents so that we have the transparency and the communication of letting everybody know of this open public forum. Anyways, the proposed property right now is, we're looking at a site of cannabis redevelopment by Just Healthy LLC. So I'm hoping that everybody in Ward 6, they're hearing this, and you're invited, and councilors all, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Other announcements? Councilor Klein.
Well, I'd like to invite everyone to something in Leeds, because we don't see everyone out in Leeds all the time. The Leeds Civic Association over the last year prepared historical signage. Leeds has a really fascinating history in all these different ways, from the flood, the big flood in the late 1800s, to the development of the silk mills there. So historical signage was prepared, really beautiful historical signage was prepared, and I think, can't remember how many sites, something like 10 different sites. And there will be a historical signage celebration and self-guided walking tour on May 12, from 11 to 12:30. The rain date is the following day, May 13. There will be the walking tour, all at the same time. It's self-guided, but everyone goes at the same time. And then there will be refreshments on the Leeds Main Street green and viewing of the Hall of the Mansion up on Yankee Hill. So, May 12, 11 to 12:30, and everyone in the city is invited. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Other announcements? Councilor Bigw.
Also on May 12, and before folks head to Leeds, from 9 to 1 on Saturday, May 12, at Smith Oak, is the annual plant sale for the benefit of the schools. Save Our Schools, Northampton Education Foundation collaborate on this. It's a wonderful event. Get your plants, support the schools.
Thank you. Anyone else?
And everyone's weekend, basically.
There you go.
Yeah, we can program the whole weekend for you.
The afternoon's still free.
All right. Unless there's anything else lined up for that weekend, we, well, let me ask the mayor if he has anything else. No? Nothing from the mayor today. So we will go to 18.081, which is the question of the appointment of Marie Westburg as Director of Senior Services. This appointment received the positive recommendation from the Committee on City Services on April 23rd. And I'll note that according to the City Charter, Section 210, the council refers candidates for appointment as a department head or as a member of a multi-member body to a standing committee, which for us is City Services. And that committee reviews each candidate and then makes recommendations to the full council within a specified time period. So let me just, what I'm going to do is ask the mayor to come up and introduce the appointee who is then welcome to speak as well. But just to expand on that, I know that this has been a topic of great community discussion, and I want to make sure that everyone in the chambers tonight and everyone watching at home knows that we are following a very established process. The role of the council under the City Charter ratified by the voters of the city is to take the appointments that come from the mayor and make an up or down vote based on an assessment that we hold. That is our charge, and it is not possible for us to substitute or make changes or amendments. We have to follow, I think, a process that we rely on for good government, the process we rely on for every other appointee, and that is the process we'll be following tonight. And that is what the Committee on City Services played a role in in April. So I'll say that, and I'd like to invite the mayor to come up and introduce Ms. Westburg.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, members of the City Council. As the council president indicated, I am pleased this evening to introduce to you Marie Westburg, my appointee to be our new Director of Senior Services. Ms. Westburg has an extensive 25-year background in social services, including seven years in her current position as Director of the Town of Williamsburg Senior Center and Council on Aging. Ms. Westburg has, during her tenure there, she's significantly expanded programming and outreach to seniors, formed important collaborations with regional agencies, and been successful in securing grants to support her department's efforts. Prior to her work at the Senior Center, she was a business owner and creator of the Art Star Creative Arts Lounge, offering contract work with social service organizations, private lessons, workshops, and camps. And her previous professional experience also includes work in the field of mental health as a psychiatric counselor, psychotherapist, and art therapist. I should also note that Ms. Westburg has been serving as temporary director this week at the Senior Center. And so, again, it's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Westburg to you tonight, and I hope that you will give her a positive recommendation and affirm her. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, Ms. Westburg.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I've had a good week at Senior Center. People have been very welcoming, and I'm excited about the future of all the endeavors that we'll be doing together there with the seniors. I wanted to report a little bit on, yesterday there was a job fair with the Earn Initiative that Lynda Desmond started, and that was, I think, over 150 people attended that. So just to go over a little bit about what I said in the subcommittee meeting, I'm really excited about working with the ADA initiative of the Commission and also working on healthy aging and city planning, making, working to make Northampton an age-friendly city. And many of the initiatives that Lynda Desmond has started are really on that route already. So I've met a lot of people this week. I've been welcomed with open arms, and I think people are looking forward to contributing. So I think we have a good team there, and I've gotten to know some of the staff, and we're starting to form some working relationships that I think are going to be very positive, so.
Good. Thank you very much for that introduction. If you wouldn't mind remaining up there, I'll ask the council if anyone has any comments or questions for Ms. Westburg. Councilor LeBarge.
Thank you. Good afternoon. When we interviewed you on City Services, I directly asked you a question, Ms. Westburg. In regard, have you ever been an ADA coordinator? And you said no.
Correct.
Correct. And you also said they did not have one. Anyways, I always take it amongst myself, and I went through, which is an update through the state on ADA coordinators. Okay? I just want to let you know this. Williamsburg, Charlene Nardi.
Town administrator.
Who's your ADA coordinator? And I'm a little confused, because you had told me, no, there was not one.
Right. Well, there isn't a dedicated position for that. She acts as the ADA coordinator, but she also does everything. So...
All these cities and towns, they're broken down, okay? Planning Department, the Fire Department, even though they are an entity, they still are an ADA coordinator.
Correct.
Because it sets it right here for your town. I just wanted to let you know that.
Right. But they don't have a dedicated ADA coordinator position. So she acts, basically, I think that the town administrator, this town administrator is a new position as well. So the Select Board oversees everything.
Right.
Now that we have a town administrator in Williamsburg, she oversees everything as well. And there are some regional initiatives, like the Conservation Committee has staffing that is regionalized.
I understand that.
Right.
Because with her, she's under town administrator slash ADA coordinator. And my question was, I asked you, and you said, no, we don't have one. So I just wanted to verify this. Then today, when I had time, we get this letter from Pat Shaughnessy.
Okay.
Every one of us councilors, in regards about me questioning you about an ADA coordinator. And I had already done my own research, okay? That, she knew who that person was. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other? Thank you, Councilor. Any other?
You're welcome.
Councilor Dwight, please.
Ms. Westburg, pleasure to see you. An opportunity to review your application as part of the committee, and actually it was more than pleased and proud to have the opportunity to forward that on the merits of our recommendations. I think it's worth noting, as far as ADA coordinator, an ADA coordinator, of course, our two previous ADA coordinators would be Patty Shaughnessy and Lynda Desmond, neither of which, neither of whom was an ADA coordinator previous to the job. It was learned on the job, which I suspect you're probably going to learn as well. And it's clearly a very important position, particularly as Northampton struggles, and Councilor LeBarge understands very well, because Councilor LeBarge has been on the Disabilities Commission for a long time. We'll be generous. And I think it's worth noting that in, I did have an opportunity to interview Ms. Westburg, and I was very impressed and excited at the prospect of you being one of our candidates. I also concur with the mayor's decision and choice in this instance. I think that, you know, this, as the council president described, essentially our job is to determine whether the mayor's selection is qualified to serve in the position that they are being appointed to. And no one has challenged that, nor should they, because you are more than qualified. So in that regard, I think that, you know, the vote shouldn't be all that difficult here. So I won't make it any more painful for you to have to endure any more conversation with the mayor. But anyway, thank you very much, and I appreciate you submitting your application. And also, I understand that we poached you from Beltratown and Williamsburg, so we have two communities that we have some contacts with, I suppose, but I'm grateful that we have the opportunity to have you serve here.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say that I take the ADA Coordination Commission responsibility very seriously, and I did meet with some of the members of that committee yesterday. So I think what I told them is I'm willing to learn anything I need to learn, and that I will be a strong advocate, and that I am very good at pulling in resources to help myself when I don't know everything I need to know. And I'm not afraid to admit that I don't know everything. So I won't pretend that I do, but I am a hard worker and I will do my due diligence, so.
And are there any councilors who have not spoken who would like to speak at this time? Councilor Bidwell, and then we'll go to Councilor LeBarge again.
I would just like to add that I enjoyed very much the conversation we were able to have in the City Services Committee. And I was quite impressed with your preparedness for the job and some of the new initiatives that you have in mind. And just to reiterate what the council president has said, I mean, it looks like our job, I think our job is to see if there's anything wrong with the process by which the mayor's appointment came to us. And is there anything which on its surface, based on the information we have, that would suggest you're not qualified for the job? And the process, as best I can tell, and actually, we do know a lot about that process, I think, was a by-the-book process. And I think everything that we have seen about you and heard from you suggests that you're very well qualified for the position. So I think it's clear that we should, with some enthusiasm, be supporting your appointment. And if it's appropriate, I'll put a motion on the floor that we confirm the appointment of Marie Westburg as Director of Senior Services.
Seconded.
The motion is made and seconded. Is there any comment to that question? No? Then let me, if I may, close by thanking you for coming. To my mind, the purpose was to allow the full council to conduct this kind of diligence that the Committee on City Services also did, because that's our responsibility as a council. But it's also important that the wider public got a chance to hear you speak and hear about your qualifications. The separation of powers we have in our city government, which we mentioned, the mayor making appointments in this case, the council providing scrutiny of them, is not a one-time thing. It's a feature of our government that we try to provide oversight in a general sense, not in the sense that we manage city departments in any way, but that we're there to work with city departments when necessary. For example, the Committee on City Services will bring in many different departments over the course of a year, as councilors know, to say, how's it going? What are the programs you're working on? Can we help? So I just would like to close by saying I hope you realize that not only are we here to scrutinize your qualifications, we're here to support you, because everyone in the city has an interest in the Department of Senior Services succeeding and for you to succeed. So you should know, we have that ongoing commitment to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, I would like to call the question, and I'll ask for a roll call on the question of appointing Ms. Westburg as Director of Senior Services.
Councilor Bidwell.
Yes.
Councilor Klein.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Klein.
Yes.
Councilor LeBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Murphy.
Yes.
Councilor Nash.
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Westburg is unanimously confirmed to this position. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the Consent Agenda, which approves the following items. First, approval of the April 5, 2018 minutes, various appointments, which will be the equivalent to referral to the Committee on City Services. Those are to the Board of Health, forgive me for any mispronunciations that are forthcoming, Dr. Cynthia Sopsis.
Sopis.
Sopsis.
Sopis. You got it.
Sopis. 120 Coles Meadow Avenue, Northampton, from July 2018 to June 2021. Laurent Levy, Forest School Street, Northampton, July 2018 through 2021. To the Conservation Commission, Jack Finn, 57 King Street, Suite B, Northampton, from July 2018 to July 2021. To the Historical Commission, Barbara Blumenthal, 39 Chapel Street, July 2018 to June 2021. Am I still on the right one? Yes. To the Housing Partnership, James Reese, 108 Coles Meadow Road, Northampton, July 2018 to June 2021. Human Rights Commission, Joel Morris, 51 Vernon Street, July 2018, June 2021. License Commission, Brian Campadelli, 223 Cardinal Way, Florence, July 2018 to June 2021. Are there any removals from the Consent Agenda?
Like to move approval to Consent Agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
All votes in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's no abstentions, Consent Agenda is approved. Thank you very much. We will proceed to resolutions now. And we have 18.097, a resolution to lower the voting age for Northampton municipal elections. This is the first reading. If there's no objection, I will read the resolution and open it up for debate, once we get a motion. This is upon the recommendation of the Northampton Mayor's Youth Commission, Councilor William H. Dwight. This is our 18.097, a resolution to lower the voting age for Northampton municipal election. Whereas the right to vote is elemental to democracy, and that right should be protected and guaranteed to all qualified citizens. And whereas 16 and 17-year-olds possess the same critical analytic intelligence as 18-year-olds. And whereas in Massachusetts, 16-year-olds have been deemed able to consent to sexual intercourse, obtain a learner's permit and driver's license, get married with parental consent, work a full-time job, and pay taxes. And whereas Austria, Argentina, Brazil, Scotland, Switzerland lowered their voting age to 16 for municipal and in some cases, national elections, and studies showed that the younger voters were no less informed than their older counterparts. And whereas the largest portion of Northampton's municipal budget is the school budget, and whereas most people voting in Northampton did not go through the modern Northampton public school system, but most 16-year-olds living in Northampton currently are in that school system, giving them an important and unique perspective on school issues. And whereas studies have shown 16-year-olds have been the largest age demographic to closely follow certain votes, such as the following, excuse me, such as following the Scottish referendum to leave the United Kingdom. And whereas early voter engagement increases civic participation later in life, which is vital to a democracy. And whereas turnout among all voters in the United States is decreasing, and a push to vote is much needed for younger citizens. And whereas younger citizens are demonstrating their desire to influence the government that serves them by demonstrating, in a different sense, for demonstrating for sensible gun laws to prevent gun violence. And whereas expanding suffrage to people who previously were not able to vote is good for democracy by every measure. And whereas Massachusetts legislation has advanced a civic education requirement to promote critical thinking and participation among younger people. And whereas 16-year-olds may now pre-register to vote in Massachusetts, which may provide a logistical framework for their participation. Now therefore be it resolved that the sponsors call on, upon the Northampton City Council to petition the Massachusetts Legislature to allow the City of Northampton to establish a minimum voting age for residents of Northampton of 16 for all municipal elections. I would accept a motion on this resolution.
Take a motion?
Is it seconded? So it's on the floor. I invite the sponsors to introduce it.
As you heard Margot Shocket Green express, she is the current Chair of the Northampton Youth Commission. This has been in discussion now for almost two and a half years, massaging it, trying to, doing analysis. And in fact, actually, all these assertions in here do have citations. And in fact, actually, all these assertions in here do have citations. We thought we'd spare you the citations, but they are available, and we'll include them in the final document, I think, could probably be the best way to serve. But I think the best way to put it, and I, you know, there is an allusion to it. On March 24, just five weeks following the shootings of the Parkland School in Florida, in five weeks' time, throughout this country, people between the ages of 16 and 18 organized one of the largest demonstrations, mass demonstrations, as has been witnessed in this country, which is saying something, particularly recently, and especially in Northampton. It was organized, run, managed, and performed basically exclusively by this cohort, this cohort that we tend to fob off as being too young or too callow. And it's interesting, when I first posited this, actually, when the Youth Commission was discussing this last year, I actually wrote a column about it and posted, and it's interesting, the pushback and the response from the community on this, there's lots of support, but then there are a lot of things like, they're not mature enough, they don't own property, they won't think for themselves, they'll vote the way their parents do, it's a, it's a, just a means by which the liberals are trying to, you know, stack the deck. I mean, it's interesting, a lot of these arguments, of course, we've heard used before when we were trying to deny suffrage to African-Americans and deny suffrage to women. And, you know, this whole issue about being a property owner, we got rid of that some time ago, thank God. You did not have, once upon a time, when we first established voting laws, only the one-man-one-vote thing was a ruse. It was basically one man who owned property, which included slaves, could vote, and the other men could not if you did not. Suffrage is critical, obviously, voting is critical, and we have an anemia when it starts to come to elections. As far as other qualifications, you need to be a U.S. citizen. In some states, you can't be a felon, and you have to be over the age of 18, that's it. You don't need any other qualifications. You could, you don't have to be brilliant, you don't have to be good-looking, you don't have to be wise. But I would argue that actually, recently, I think the youth, particularly in this community and other communities, proven wisdom is very evident in that group, and maybe not so evident in our group, because I would hold up as exhibit one, the President of the United States. So discerning voters in the nation voted for Donald Trump for president. I'd like to ask more people to join the club, who participate and maybe expand our conversation and discussion, and I think the Youth Commission has already demonstrated, and the youth of Northampton demonstrated, a desire to participate in the governance that has an impact and effect on them. So it was, this has been really exciting for me. It's been a great project to work with on this. This is, will be unique if Bill Galvin decides this time that it's okay. This has been tried before, and if, or if the legislature decides to send it back to us. Northampton may have the opportunity to be the first community in the state of Massachusetts to do this. But we're not the first to think of it, and there are a lot of other communities that are queued up to do the same thing. There's a Hilltown collect, a group that Hoyok is considering the same thing, to give agency to the younger voters in their community in the form of a vote. So, and actually, I'm fairly confident, I'm speaking to a rather receptive body on this issue, but the fact is, I think I would like to recommend that this be referred to legislative matters for a more expansive conversation about this, and for possible amendment. I know that councillor Bidwell has some Scribner's issues to discuss, and I welcome any contribution on this. We, this was done by committee, and I would just assume, I think, being massaged and polished by committee would be great, I'd be grateful for any, any energy that my fellow councillors would be willing to donate, so.
Councillor from Ward 4?
So since, well, March 24 and before, with the organizing, you're right that this is, youth civic engagement has become a national topic in general, but specifically, this has become a big topic around lowering the voting age, and, you know, The Washington Post, New York Times, NPR, they've all done opinion pieces on it. So there, you're right, there are a lot of communities that are talking about this, but I just, I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge, and Margot mentioned it, and you mentioned that this is something that the Youth Commission's been working on for a while, and that's true, and I just, I want to say that I know that this is something that you, councillor Dwight, have been talking about and thinking about for even longer than that, so I think it should be acknowledged that you were well in front of the curve when thinking about this issue, and the importance of bringing younger people into the fold and engaging them civically and giving them the right to vote, so credit where it's due.
Thanks.
Councillor Clonan?
Thank you, councillor Dwight, and the Youth Commission, if there's anyone still here from it, for this piece of work, it's important. And I just wanted to say two quick things. My, the best, the most sophisticated and robust political discussions that I have right now in my life are with my 15-year-old and my 17-year-old nieces. And my 17-year-old niece was one of the main organizers in her city of Medford to create the March for Our Lives there. So I see firsthand how youth really contribute to our political process and just kind of social betterment, so I'm all for this. And I just thought it was important, and you can probably speak to this better than I can, councillor Dwight, but I understand that this is a home rule issue, that we can't as a city, this is coming to us as a resolution as opposed to an ordinance, because we don't, we as a council cannot put forward or change legislation in terms of voting age. So I don't know if you want to speak to that, just to educate people a little bit more about it, but I do know that, I don't know how many years ago was, four or five years ago, that the city of Lowell tried to lower the voting age, and it was ruled unconstitutional either by, I don't know, the State Supreme Court, was it, or the Secretary of State? So people have tried to do that in different cities in Massachusetts, or at least in Lowell I know of. So I just think that that's important for people to understand why this is coming to us, I think, in this format.
And, man, you're absolutely right. We don't, not have the authority to declare that, but, and that's why this is essentially a resolution appealing to the council to draft a home rule petition. And in fact, actually, this has been discussed, we need, there are some charter changes that we need to do for a number of things, small details like special elections issues that don't work and things like that. And I, and I would like to see this folded into that appeal, and I think soon we should draft it. The idea is, in all likelihood, if the legislature so deems, they would probably send it back to us to put on the ballot, to have the city vote on this issue. And so that's my, the hope is that if this, the resolution passes, as I said, I'm fairly comfortable with that, then, then it's incumbent upon us to work together and figure out how we would draft a home rule petition to the legislature to see, to send off to them. And vote, well, vote on it here and then send it off to them, and hopefully return with favorable. And we'll see what Mr. Galvin has to say, too, but I suspect that unconstitutional ruling is challengeable, easily challengeable. Hopefully, there, and I think the stage has been set, particularly by these demonstrations, recent demonstrations, that I think there's a broadened community receptiveness to the notion that we are watching the people we define as our children do the work that we should have done. And so I, perhaps the secretary could be persuaded to suddenly recognize that this is constitutionally correct.
Councillor Bidwell?
I very much appreciate the hard work that's been put in over two years and more, and I'm supportive of it. If it were to come to be, I think we'd be enormously proud to be the first or one of the first communities in Massachusetts to lower voting age in municipal elections to age 16. I, too, had a question about the process. Councillor Dwight, are you, are you suggesting that we come up with a process for recommending charter changes of this, which would, of which this would be one, or as opposed to a standalone home rule petition? I gather it's the former you're suggesting.
I, the reason is that we do have some critical issues that need to be addressed, and I figure, I mean, obviously, circumstances have changed. We've lost our representative. We've just lost our senator. The people who would carry these two items forward, or at least would be our banner carriers, aren't available to us now. So that I, you know, I have to acknowledge the fact that that, that is more than problematic for not just this, but for so many things. But, yeah, the idea was that probably fold them in together, send them off as a package to be reviewed by, by the legislature. I understand that there was some discussion also recently about some petitions, petitions that might be forwarded by the mayor, for instance, relative to undocumented residents being able to have the right to vote. I don't know if we incorporate those, or if the timeline's affected or not, but that's something we would have to strategize. Again, once, should this be accepted, and that be basically taking the temperature of the council, and we want to proceed that way, then I think, then we have to, then we would do that calculus afterwards.
Anyone else? Councillor Neagh?
So as somebody who's been working with youth all of my life, that, I just want to say that I really appreciate the work of the Youth Commission, once again. I mean, the Youth Commission's been developing stuff like this for a long time and pushing us forward, and this is, this is probably one of the most remarkable things that's come out of the Youth Commission. And I am a superfan of all of the work that you guys have done over the years. I've filled in a few times for councillor Dwight, and it's, it's really a fabulous little gem that started with Mayor Higgins and has continued under Mayor Narcoitz. It's a great way for our youth to become involved in the civic process. I mean, it's, one of my favorite meetings is their first organizational meeting where they elect a, you know, a chair, and who's going to be a secretary, and they're kind of figuring it out, and, and by, you know, a few weeks into it, they, they know how to run a public meeting. So, and, and this is the kind of stuff that comes out of there, and we should all be very proud of the work that they're able to produce here. So I'm going to fully support this, and wherever we send it today, I thank them for the work.
Councillor LeBarge?
Yes, I also want to thank the Youth Commission. Councillor Dwight, you talked about me with the Commission on Disabilities, you've been along to them for quite a long time, and a lot of effort has been put into the Youth Commission. I'm going to support this, too, no matter where, we're going to send it to legislative matters. What I have to say, and I have to echo what councillor Dwight has said, a lot of effort has been put in to the democracy of our youths in the city. The gun violence, it showed how much support and hard work that they put into it, and we're all there in support for them, and this is awesome. I agree with this. I think that the limit should be dropped down to 16 years old, and to me, when you go out and work, and whatever you do, I mean, you go and get a permit or a driver's license, you go out and work full-time, you deserve this. What's the difference between 16 and 18? So I support this.
Councillor?
I'll just, just add that I, 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 too, would support it being referred to Legislative Affairs, so it can get more attention, more airtime, more visibility, more discussion, I think that'd be great. Councillor Dwight referred to a couple of Scribner's errors that I pointed out. I won't bother us all here, maybe just-
You will do it then.
Just, just submit it before it comes back for second reading. I would just, the one thing I would mention is the final, therefore be it resolved, I think what we want to say, be it resolved that the Northampton City Council petitions the institutions to Legislature. We have already been petitioned by the sponsors now, so I would just, that would be one of those minor tweaks that I would suggest.
Well, that, my only concern is that would suggest that this is the petition to the Legislature, and I think that actually has to be copied in a different way. I think the petition has a particular format that this would not conform to.
I see what you mean. So that, that's why you wanted to keep it in the form of the sponsors, correct? I see, okay.
Not noted. Might it be the case that the Committee on Legislative Matters comes back not with this resolution, or with this resolution and an actual order?
Pending, pending the vote, yeah, depending on the determination of the vote, although I'm counting, and it seems pretty, prospects look good. So it, I think that's the place to actually craft that, I think that's true. I would like to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate the process, it's like a mini constitutional convention.
Right.
It's even a mini charter review. I mean, we do a charter review every 10 years, and this is sort of in addition to that. So I like the idea that we're going to have a process before it even goes to Legislature for people's comments, and we may get some interesting suggestions to craft it to our, to the maximum benefit of Northampton, so. Great, I support this, too, for the record, anyway. Any other discussion? Is there a motion to refer this to Legislative Matters?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the referral? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, so the matter's referred. Thank you very much, great. Let's see, no presentations tonight, we will recess for the Committee on, starring David-
Thank you, very short meeting it will be. Laura, would you call our rule?
Councillor Murphy?
Here.
Councillor Clonan?
Present.
Councillor LeBarge?
Present.
Councillor Scherer?
Here.
So first item is approval of the minutes of our last meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any corrections, discussion, bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And financial orders, the first one is 18.094, order to authorize the mayor to sign a vendor contract for up to five years. Order that whereas Northampton will seek to replace optical voting equipment for 2018, and whereas the city, whereas it's in the city's interest to be able to sign a three-year contract, including a maintenance agreement that extends for an additional two years, and whereas the city council approve, approval is required for contracts over three years, now order that the mayor is authorized to sign a vendor contract for up to five years on such terms as the mayor determines are agreeable. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
And here's the mayor to answer questions.
Yeah, this is actually an order that I filed at the request of the city clerk, Pam Powers, who's here tonight. As you know, in the capital improvement program this year, you approved a funding request to fund these new voting systems that we now need to implement, to upgrade our outdated and old failing voting machines. So this is actually allowing us to sign a contract that would extend beyond three years. This is a vote that we've done many times for technology, for textbooks, for any number of things, and state law requires any contract longer than three years, I can't sign without getting authorization. So I would also defer to the city clerk if you had any specific questions about the contract or what this is for, but that's the basic purpose of the order.
Any questions for the mayor or the clerk? Good with the, we talked about this capital improvements a little bit. So with no questions of the mayor and the clerk, all in favor of a positive recommendation for answers, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. And the next is 18.095, an order relative to a taking on Garfield Avenue, whereas by order 18.024, the city council voted to lay out and accept a public, as public way, a parcel of land shown as Garfield Avenue Extension. It's 3,082.4 square feet on a plan entitled Commonwealth of Massachusetts Street Acceptance Plan of Garfield Avenue Extension, prepared for the city of Northampton and Hampshire County, dated March 6, 2017. And whereas in the order, to complete the layout of the extension of Garfield Avenue, the city council must authorize the acquisition of the land, now therefore it be ordered that the mayor is hereby authorized to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, that parcel of land shown as Garfield Avenue Extension of 3,082.4 square feet on a plan entitled Commonwealth of Massachusetts Street Acceptance Plan of the Garfield Avenue Extension, prepared for the city of Northampton, Hampshire County, Massachusetts, dated March 6, 2017. No appropriation is needed for this acquisition. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Sir.
Questions for the mayor on this one? We've seen it before.
This is just the companion to the other order that you adopted that would actually formally accept that little sliver of Garfield as part of the full public way.
And a hearing was duly held on that subject?
Yes. And petition submitted.
So any questions, going ones, going vice? All in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I know of no business. Does anyone know of any other business? And that's all, folks. A motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. And now we will take up some of those orders. 18.094, order authorizing the mayor to sign a vendor contract for up to five years. Is there a motion to approve this one?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on the order? As for, would our clerk like to provide the information, or?
If you have any questions, I can certainly answer any questions that you might have.
Are there questions from the council? I think we, well, briefly, this is equipment that we need to conduct elections.
Right. So our current equipment is 22 years old and well past what we would have expected for the equipment to be lasting. And we've been advised by the state as well as by our current vendor, E S and S, to replace the equipment. And this was one of those things that because of the total cost of the project, we needed to go up and solicit bids. We did that, and we will be using a new vendor if you approve us to do so tonight. And included as part of that package will be a five-year warranty agreement with the new contract.
Thank you. Oh, Counselor Dwight.
Pam, what would the voter's experience be? Would the, will the process be identical or very similar? Would it be connecting arrows and?
So, so instead of connecting the line, it will be filling in a dot, a circle, to identify what, what candidate you're voting for. You'll still be able to feed your equipment, I mean, your ballot through the equipment, through the optical scanner. And instead of getting a sort of a readout on a digital display, I'm sorry, an analog display, it will now tell you if there's any problems with the ballot on a digital display. So it's a little bit different. I understand that the, the town of East Hampton has been using the equipment for five years, and they, they really think very highly of the equipment as well as working with the LHS vendor, so.
And would it expedite ballot results, any chance, or is that still, you have to wait till someone comes down and?
Well, that would be a different equipment purchase. I'm happy to come back and talk to you at a future point in time. But, but right now, the process would still work the same. We would still tabulate at the end of the evening, and then the results would be brought back down to City Hall for us to, to tabulate. But there is, there is an equipment available that will allow us to make it a little bit more, do that a little bit more quickly, and, and the option is there for us to purchase it.
Thank you. Counselor Klein.
I have two questions, but I was listening so intently to that, I have to remember what they were. So I should probably understand this, but we're talking about a contract, we essentially lease this equipment? This isn't a purchase of equipment?
It's, it's a purchase. We would purchase the equipment.
So the vendor contract is just for the maintenance over the period?
So, so as part of the contract, we get a two-year warranty for all of the equipment. We're looking to have, beyond that two-year warranty, we would like to understand what the charges would be for a, a one-year maintenance agreement. And so this, this contract, when I put together the specifications, I asked them to maintain the same price for the maintenance agreement for three years. And essentially, they came, both vendors that sent bids indicated what that price would be. And so in order to do, to sign a contract to incorporate the specifications that I had put together, it would include the two-year warranty period plus the additional three years beyond that warranty period.
That's hopeful. Thank you. And the other question's slightly related to what's already been asked, but will there, because the process will be only, I know, slightly different, and it sounds like it will be fairly simple, will there be an effort to kind of educate voters about, you know, how this looks different and that they're going to be going into a different situation?
So one thing that the vendor has already provided us with is a video specific to North Hampton to explain the voting process, how people will mark their ballots, and how they'll feed them into the equipment. So the plan will be to make that avail, that video available on our website, as well as perhaps with NCTV to air it on their channel so that people will have an opportunity to see, know what to expect when they go in the voting booth, and then deliver their ballot to the voting equipment.
Is it possible to actually do it on-site, as people, before people enter, to, to screen the video?
Oh, that's a good question. It, it might be. We have seven voting locations, so it would be a matter of trying to figure out how to display the, the, the video at those seven locations. But I can inquire about that and see, you know, what we might be able to do.
Kind of far afield from all voting on here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you.
Schoolhouse Rock kind of theme thing.
Schoolhouse Rock, yeah.
Any other comments? Oh, Counselor.
As of what election will this new equipment be?
Well, the second, the second order on the agenda tonight is asking for you to discontinue use of the old equipment and begin using the new equipment with the primary, with the state primary. So September 4th. That'll give us enough time to get, finish the contract, get the equipment here, train people in-house. Of course, the election workers have to be trained as well as, as the people who are going to be using the equipment. So there's a whole education component that I'm working on to make this happen.
I have a quick question. I apologize. It just occurred to me. We've talked about some charter changes. One thing we talk about sometimes, especially relative to special elections, is condensing preliminaries and general elections into a single one. And we sometimes discuss the possibility of ranked choice voting, which is one method of accomplishing that. And so I'm wondering if you know offhand, or if not, if you could get the information, whether the new voting equipment could accommodate such a system? Should we adopt it?
I, I can take a look at that. I don't have that answer for you tonight, but I'll certainly take a look at it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, good. Are we ready to vote on this, or? Okay, so, thank you, Clerk Powers. Is there, we have the motion, do we not? Okay, then all those for roll call.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Yes.
The order is approved unanimously, and we proceed to 18.095, an order of Garfield Avenue Taken. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
To approve.
Any discussion on the order? Not, I'd ask for roll calls.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Yes.
The order is approved unanimously. We have three orders on second reading. The first is 18.083, order to appropriate $15,482 from free cash to Health Department for emergency preparedness and activities. Any, is there a motion on this?
To approve.
For second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Klein.
Orders approved, 18.086, order to appropriate free cash in the amount of $50,000 for structural repairs at Memorial Hall.
To approve.
For second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call whenever we're ready.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
This is the companion order that you heard about. 18.093, an order discontinuing the Optic Eagle II voting system and approving use of the image cash precinct optical scanner and tabulator system. I'll note for the purpose of process, the city clerk has requested two readings on this day to accommodate the requirement that a certified copy of the order discontinuing use of the old equipment and approving use of the new system must be received by the Elections Division by May 7, 2018. Is there a motion to approve this one?
Make a motion.
Any discussion on this? Clerk Powers, do you have anything to add? You sort of outlined it.
I noticed that notation was there.
Okay.
Definitely was my intended.
Okay. Not said as eloquently as you would have said it, I'm sure. So if there's no more discussion, we'll ask for a roll call.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor O'Donnell.
Any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor of spending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
No abstentions, rules are suspended.
Second reading. Second.
Okay. Any discussion on second reading? Okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes. There are two ordinances that have not yet been referred, so we cannot act on them. The first is 18.096, roads-taking ordinance. Is there a desire for me to read this ordinance into the record? Let me just pull it up here. Put it up on the screen. Oh, here it is. Okay, good. So let me, allow me to do that. This is an ordinance of the City of North Hampton, Massachusetts, be ordained by the City Council, assembled. This adds a section to the zoning code 350-63. Reduction of dimensional and density regulations be amended by adding a new subsection as follows. D, when land is taken by the city or the Commonwealth for public purposes not specified in the section above, and when such conveyance renders the remaining, remainder of the lot non-conforming, or as to a pre-existing non-conforming lot increases its nonconformity with the dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance, that the remainder lot shall be considered to be a protected, non-conforming lot, subject to the provisions of Section 350-9. Subsection 1, if the remainder lot, if the remainder lot, it is not held in common with any adjoining parcels. And 2, if the remainder lot has a minimum of 3,750 square feet of lot size, 50 feet of frontage, and a minimum of 10 feet of setback from all property lines regardless of the zoning district. And 3, if the remainder lot is in a commercial or industrial district, the 10-foot setback requirement is measured from either a building or a parking lot, whichever is closer to the front lot line.
To refer to Legislative Matters?
Okay. And second, does it have to go anywhere else? Just Legislative Matters?
It is a zoning ordinance, I believe, so it goes to Legislative Matters.
Planning has it automatically, does it not?
The only place it has to go here is Legislative Matters.
Okay, good.
But it can send it anywhere else you want.
Any, any discussion on the referral to Legislative Matters? All those in favor of the referral, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions, the matter is referred.
Who seconded the motion to refer?
Yeah, that would be me. Sorry.
Now we have 18.098, ordinance to delete sewer use from Chapter 260 of the North Hampton Code Book. And it simply deletes the chapter and adds in place of reserved sea water use regulations listed on www.northhamptonmass.gov. Okay? Is there a motion on this ordinance to refer?
So moved.
To Legislative Matters? Does it go anywhere else? Mr. Mayor, are you getting up to provide any?
No, I thought you had a question about it, but it's just being referred, that's fine.
Relatives, it's germane to the referral, one thing you could look at in the referral is the practice of putting URLs in ordinances. That's, perhaps that's something we need to look at. Good. Any discussion on referral? If not, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
There's no abstentions, so that is referred. We have some second reading ordinances?
I would like to move them as a group. It's second reading, that would be to rezone a parcel on East Hampton Road to Office Industrial, eliminate the business park zone, rezone conservation areas to farm forests and rivers, rezone a portion of property on Federal Street to, from URB to Office Industrial, and rezone for residential properties and aside from general industrial to URB. Like to move those as a group.
Did you skip one?
Second. Five, A, B, C, D, N, E.
A, B, C, D, N, E.
Okay. Okay, motion made to refer those as a group, excuse me, to vote on them as a group? Second?
Okay.
Any discussion on these zoning ordinances as a, as a group? Okay. Whoever will call whenever we're ready.
Uh, yes.
A, B, C, D, N, E.
Yes.
So, Councilor Bidwell?
Yes.
Councilor Dwight.
Yes.
Councilor Dwight.
Yes.
Councilor Klein.
Yes.
Councilor Labarge.
Yes.
Councilor Murphy.
Yes.
Councilor Nash.
Yes.
Councilor O'Donnell.
Yes.
And Councilor Shera.
Yes.
Those are passed in second reading. We have two ordinances left on the same subject. Handle those separately, is that okay? Versus eighteen point zero six eight, ordinance to eliminate newspaper legal notice requirement for site plan review projects. Is there a motion on this?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Councilor Dwight, then Councilor Bidwell?
Just reiterating my intent to recuse myself because of familial relations.
Councilor Bidwell?
I was not here two weeks ago. The plague that was going around hit me, but I was watching on television and, um, I frankly was not persuaded that removal of these newspaper legal notice requirements is either anachronistic or prudent. The dollar savings are minimal. And even if there are only a few people who are accustomed to keeping track of things by paper notices, even if there are only a few, I think it's, I think it's worth sticking with it. And I, I remembered that about a year and a half ago, there was a reenergizing democracy, a series of workshops and process that we went through. The kind of valley planning commission really sponsored it, but it included a team of Casa Latina, the Human Rights Commission, our housing authority, Healthy Hampshire. And the whole thrust of this was looking for ways to further engage members of the public in the workings of our democracy and in the workings of municipal government. And there was a whole section of recommendations on disseminating information, and though there was a great deal of attention paid to what more can be done with social media and other outlets, there was also this recommendation. While there was a push for social media, participants also noted that not everyone has access to the internet, so information should continue to be available in paper versions. There was another comment from a, from a public hearing that got quoted in this set of recommendations, which by the way, it's a, it's a report that's on the city's website, reenergizing democracy recommendations. And this, this additional comment was, we need to have information available in print format because not everyone has access to online information, or has internet, or has a smartphone. And I frankly think it would be consistent with the thrust of, of the principles of reenergizing democracy to maintain these print notices in the newspaper. So I will, I will, I will vote against both of these ordinances, six eight and six nine, for, for those, for those reasons, and encourage my colleagues to perhaps give a second thought.
There's a request that we recognize or ask Ms. Mish, our senior land use planner, to come up and speak to this. Would, would you mind? I'm confident you know more about almost everything than us. So, that's your downfall. No pressure.
Just, and again, I always, at the public hearing where it came up, but these are two really specific things, simply site plan review, and then the central business architectural district is a home rule district.
Right.
That isn't addressed in state law anywhere. But I think what's misunderstood is how many of these things actually occur?
Right.
And, and the fact that, I think people think we're eliminating all of the legal notices. Could you kind of explain?
Sure.
The occasions when we do them, and why you feel that it's worthy discontinuing having to legally notice these in the paper? I don't think they happen as often as some of the other reviews do.
Right. So I'll start with site, site plan. Site plan is a planning board review process. It's a construct of Northampton. It's not stipulated in state statute, so it doesn't, um, follow or, to follow the same standards for public notice as special permits, as subdivisions, as zoning board of appeals findings, which are all regulated under forty A to follow a certain legal notice requirement. And we have moved, originally, everything was required to go through special permit under forty A, and then twenty-five, thirty years ago, this concept of site planner review sort of started growing. So Northampton adopted an ordinance and just essentially said, for ease of sake, said, let's just follow the rules that, of special permit and, and leave it at that. Over time, more and more projects have come for site plan review, but they're probably split in terms of the number requiring special permit versus site plan review at the planning board. About four or five years ago, I want to say, we started, we know that people don't see notices in the, in the legal ad section, the classified section. People don't either take the paper or don't see the notices necessarily. We've done a lot more on our webpage, but four or five years ago, we started requiring, which is not required in state statute, to, for everyone who's proposing a project in the city, to post these yellow signs at the property with a specific notice of what's happening on that property, and with more information about where to go to find out about the project, either calling, or emailing, or going to our website to find out about it. So no matter what the project, special permit, site plan, central business architecture, whatever hearing is happening at the, through the boards that are department staffs, we use these yellow signs, and we require that the applicants post these two weeks ahead. So this is, I think now people see the yellow signs and they, and they look and they know something's happening because it's been around now for several years. But this also allows people who are in the neighborhood that aren't also mailed specific notice, because many of these, all of these projects require specific mailing to the abutters within either one hundred feet, two hundred feet, or three hundred feet, depending on the permit. So there's a mailed notice that goes for these projects as well as this yellow sign. And certainly people who don't get the specific mailed notice but live in the neighborhood might have a specific interest. So if they're walking or driving in their neighborhood, they're going to see this yellow sign and be able to see with this insert exactly what's happening, which is a lot more information than, and could get to a lot more people than a legal notice in the paper that's, you know, in the back section. So we've done that recently, in the last few years, to make sure we reach a broader group of people. So that's, on the planning board side, we also require these for central business architecture review projects. And central business architecture review is also a locally constructed permit review process. And the, you know, we have fewer architectural review permits, maybe six or seven a year. And, but we do know that particularly in downtown, you get a lot of people who are coming downtown and they see these signs. So it really draws a much bigger, casts a bigger net in terms of notification on the central business side, because probably more people, you know, wandering around downtown might see a sign.
And they trigger a mailing too, right?
Central business architecture triggers their mailing, and this ordinance doesn't, doesn't adjust that mailing at all. It's really just, yeah.
So roughly, how many legal notices do you send on an average in a year, and how many would be eliminated by this change? Just rough numbers or percentage of, that would go away? Because by and large, most of the, most of them will still get legal notices because the state law requires it, right?
Right. So on the, for planning board permits, maybe a third to potentially a little bit higher would be eliminated.
But how many, what's an average number in the course of a year that you have to post?
Oh, for site plan?
Or for total number? You know, we do two hundred a year, and this would eliminate a third of them, or something kind of...
So, you know, we're actually kind of in a low, we've been in a low for a little while, so I'm just going to recalculate a bit for, for permits. But, so the board meets twice a month, so, you know, potentially if there's just one site plan for, that's, let's say there are twenty-four permits in a year, you know, spread out, average. So, you know, if a third or a half of those were site planned, then it would be, you know, six to twelve, or whatever that number is.
So.
Yeah. For central business, you know, that's the only permit they review, so it would be all of their permits. So, yeah.
Any other questions for Ms. Mish? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Klein.
That's all right.
And we'll go like this, apologize.
So as long as I have the floor, I first want to apologize and kind of set the record straight. I misspoke. I meant, what I was trying to say at our last meeting is that there is a certain anachronisticness for some people in terms of reading print newspaper. And I did get a call from a couple of constituents who were really upset, and I just want to say for the record, I actually subscribe to and read a print newspaper every day, the Daily Hampshire Gazette, so I'm not casting aspersions at all about print newspaper and its worth and its usefulness to inform the, the public. But that said, this isn't a referendum, I think, about, you know, the usefulness or archaicness, or lack thereof, of newspapers. What I'm interested in, and I kind of brought it up last time, and I know that there was a little bit of email exchange, trying to get an answer, we got some different numbers in the Legislative Matters Committee from what we then heard from Director Fiden about how much money it would actually save the city. And I'm wondering if you can put, we just asked, you know, how many permits are involved, but some monetary value to it, how much we would actually save per year if we didn't send these notices to the, the Hampshire Gazette?
Yeah, I can give you the, I mean, so, and Councilor Nash asked me and the intern to sort of, you know, go through every single legal notice that we've had for the last couple of years. So I did do that, and I will say, it definitely, there's a range. Some years, we see a lot of permits, and other years, it, it's more spotty. So for year-to-date, FY eighteen, so we're not done with that yet, there's about just under two thousand dollars so far that we've spent on legal notices that fall under these two categories, you know, lumped together.
So, because you originally had told us, I think, eight thousand dollars was what you said, and I'm just wondering, is that actually the range? It can be anywhere between two thousand and eight thousand?
Yeah, I mean, we've had some really busy years where we've got permits every month, and, and so, yes, that may be the, the outside. And if we get, so it really, it really depends. So two to, I'd say eight would probably be the outside.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, then the previous year was a little bit less than that, but we had more special permits and more subdivisions. So it's not that we're necessarily not, not doing these permits, but they're just a different nature of permitting. So, you know, we don't, so that we might have more heavily weighted towards subdivision and special permit in certain periods of time, and less so on site plan.
And the other question is kind of specifically in response to Mr. Reifenberg's list that, I don't, I don't know if you were here, if you heard, but the list of reasons why it's important to actually have public notice in the newspaper, including the need for archival information and things of that nature. So I'm wondering if that, that, those kinds of issues would apply to the, the special permitting notice and, and I'm wondering if we have record, what Mr. Reifenberg said, there were four things that he cited, or maybe we can ask him again, but just to make sure that we're not somehow falling out of line legally in terms of notice.
We're required to keep a record of all the agendas. So the agendas for all the planning board is going to have plenty, the site plan, plus the special permit, plus any other permits the boards are issuing. So we keep the minutes for that, we keep the agendas for all the meetings, and we have those digitally, and then we keep paper copies for a certain amount of time. The city clerk's office keeps, has a different standard for record keeping.
In terms of notifying the public ahead of time, is there a need for that record to, you know, that the public was indeed notified, and how it, how it was carried out and implemented and so forth?
So, I'm not, you know, from chapter forty A standards, we, you know, as part of our agendas, we identify when they're posted. So, and that's also to save time. We can't, we don't have the resources to send out, to set up separate agendas from what's legally posted in the Gazette. So we sort of do one thing that it covers everything. So that's the record that we keep of the dates that they were advertised. But no, we're not, and we're, and I will also say that again, site plan and central business architecture do not need to follow forty A, because they're our own constructed permitting process. And we've also come up, devised other ways of notifying people, particularly, you know, outside the mailed notice, that we think is very helpful and is broader than what people would see in the classified or the legal section.
Thank you.
Councilor Nash, and then Councilor Labarge.
Thank you. So first of all, I guess the signs are terrific. They, they've been a big help over the years in that it's, it's, I've pulled over many a time to look at and read what's going on at any particular property. So the thing I'm still not clear on is how much, and I understand that the legal notices, you know, I don't want you to have to go through all of the records over the last three years, but that it's, I'm still confused as to how much we're going to be saving. We did some email exchange, and that I thought we landed on that it was going to be, and I'm reading it now, and you were probably just referencing central business, that it would only be six hundred a year. But, and I thought that was for the total for central business and site plan, and what you're talking about now means, I don't know, it could be four thousand dollars, five, so, I, you know, I was ready to come in here and say, well, I'm going to defend the paper, you know, over six hundred, you know, six hundred bucks. I, I think we don't want to change protocol here, but I, but now we're talking about a much more significant amount of money. So, so I'm not sure how we're going to vote yet. So I'm going to hear what other counselors have to say.
Councilor Labarge.
Carolyn, on the mailing part, wouldn't it be the responsibility of the person that is going to go in for a hearing to do the mailing? That does not come out of the cities. They pay for it.
So we have a permit fee, and we've, part of the permit fee covers the costs of mailing to the abutters. But we internally do the abutter notification to make sure that it's going out to the right people at the right time. So we're, our office actually puts together the posting for that. It's different on the wetlands side. So because of the way the Wetlands Act was created, the applicant is required to notify people, but on forty A side, we need to provide the abutters list, but it's not, it's not specified that the applicant is required to do that.
That's just on the site plan approval you're talking about?
No, we will still, so under all the permits, special permits, subdivision, findings, those, all the permits that the boards review, where the state statute says that you have to mail to the parties in interest, which are the abutters. And under site plan, the idea is to continue to do that, because that makes, that's good practice, that makes sense. So those will continue to be mailed out, no matter what permit. So we do that for central business and everything. I will also say that there's been, there's been many, there have been many years of zoning reform efforts at the state level to change the requirements, the posting and the notice requirements. Many times, that has included elimination of the required newspaper legal notification for even the special permits and that kind of thing. We haven't really had a major zoning reform for decades, so nothing's ever changed. But I know they're also talking about that at state level. But at this point, we're just talking about our locally derived permits.
So like with the public forum that we're doing for Willard's Gravel Pen?
Yeah.
I mean, we just...
That's a little bit different, because that's outside of an official public hearing, that's just general public meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I may, the legal nature of a fee that distinguishes it from a tax is that a fee must be exactly, you know, proportionate to the costs involved.
Right.
Therefore, if you eliminate the mailing, you will reduce the fee.
Right. We're not eliminating the mailing.
Not the mailing.
Right.
The advertisement.
Um...
You would have no justification to charge people for it if you're not going to do it. Is that fair?
No, because our fees don't actually cover all the costs. So, I mean, we would, we could certainly redo the calculation for certain permits, but we are also, they don't, they don't specifically follow exactly what those costs are. It covers some of the costs of the legal notice and the mailing, but there's project review and those aspects of the price, the permitting process.
I guess, okay. I guess, so the, the fee then is insufficient to everything that, I guess I'm...
We try to match it as equal as, we try to match it as much as we can, but I wouldn't necessarily say that now we can reduce the fees without looking at it, because we typically
Yeah.
have more costs than, than we've assigned in terms of the permit fee.
So the fee is a lowballed fee, essentially, that doesn't cover all the costs. It just seems like if you were to eliminate expense, that must be reflected in the fee. I hear, I saw Councilor Shera, and then I saw Councilor Klein, and then did...
So I, I also had someone contact me, who was a former librarian, who was very concerned about losing a paper archive of these notices. So it sounds like you keep, you keep a paper for a certain amount of time, but you keep digital for as long as... Is there, do they get posted anywhere? Would there be a possibility for, say, also this for people who don't access things through the computer, could they be posted in city hall? Could they be posted at the libraries, and then the libraries could choose to keep that archive if they wanted? Like, could a notice be printed, or, you know, sent? They could have noticed, be printed, or, you know, sent, emailed, and then the library can choose to print out a paper copy and keep it?
I mean, we could post it on our webpage, that would probably be the easiest thing, or send it on the listserv, and then the library can opt to, you know, be part of the listserv if they're not already.
That was sort of my next question, is could you, like, say on the planning department page, could you post these? And I know we have a system where people can be alerted for, if there are things that people are on the lookout for, they can sign up for alerts. Could that be part of that system? Like, a really internal, central business.
I mean, we do, all of this is posted as part of the agenda.
Right.
So, that's always going to be on there. So, that's another, that's a way that if people are on the listserv to get the notice of agendas being posted, then they're automatically going to do it. So, if the library is on there, I mean, that's, they'll be getting that, or they're getting that now. So, I don't know how much more we would need to do to, you know, make that happen. I think if we're returned about keeping their own paper copies, they could certainly print that.
Right. I mean, I guess, you know, it just seems like, I mean, we're all very familiar with working with agendas, and we know what to look and when to look. But if there was, you know, if on your page, they were sort of, they were set up like, almost like press releases, or people were there, and they could go and look and click on that, and it would go directly to there, it might just be more user-friendly for them. I mean, I understand that it's, these are all public agendas, believe me, I get it. But, you know, for people who are not as familiar with working in that system.
Okay.
Counselor Klein, then Bidwell, then LaBarge.
So, I think Counselor O'Donnell had an interesting line of thinking about, because I've been trying to get at, you know, how much are we going to save the city? But in fact, if this is, you know, the money to do this public notice in the newspapers coming out of fees, but it's lowballed, I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can look at the budget of the planning department to understand how much money we would in fact be saving the city as opposed to, I mean, is there any way we can get at some numbers so we can have a sense of what this means? I mean, I don't want to be pedantic about money, but at the same time, that is our job as counselors, I think, to think about, to be, looking at, you know, how we're in fact saving the city money. And we're doing cost-benefit analysis, whether or not something is a useful process and procedure for the amount of money that we're expending. So, it just, it does feel important to me for us to have a clear sense. And it doesn't need to be down to the number, but, you know, what is eaten up by the fees that we're receiving versus what the city is actually expending? If we had some sense of that, I think it would be really helpful.
So, the only thing, I mean, so, I gave you sort of the range of, for the legal notices for just these types of permits. And I think our budget is, and I'll have to turn to the mayor, but for our department mayor, we're around $200,000, is that right, for our annual budget? Does that make sense? So, you know, it's, it's a small percentage. I mean, the other reason, I mean, what we want to do is, we want to make the most effective use of our time in getting notice out to people. And we feel like requiring the notice signs, and, so, it's twofold. It's not just about the money, it's, you know, what makes sense for our time and effort and how people are really getting information. And then there's the cost side of it. So, yes, we get to potentially save the city some money and maybe equal out that permit fee a bit. I don't have the numbers in terms of the dollars we've taken in for site plan, and they flex, different projects have different costs associated with them because of the level of review that's required for bigger projects versus smaller projects.
$360,000.
Uh, 360, okay, thanks. So, I don't know if that answers your question, or if you think you want more details about that, because I would have to go back and look at then, you know, our permit fee collection. But then, it also would require going back in and determining which ones, what type of projects it was that came in under those fees, as opposed, you know, because they could be subdivision, the subdivisions and special permits that are a bunch bigger projects take, you know, more, more staff time for review.
Okay. Counselor for Ward Two.
Thank you. I get the fact that these two types of notifications, for site plan review and central architecture district, fall outside of Chapter 48, so it's totally at local discretion, whether we do this. I just continue to think that whether it's $600, or 2,000, or $4,000 out of a $360,000 budget, that, yes, it is cost-benefit analysis. And I think for that cost, I think the benefit of reaching some people, small numbers granted, that aren't accustomed to stopping and reading yellow signs as they drive by, or don't get the mail notice, or aren't going to look at a web announcement, or aren't on a listserv, yes, there's a small number of them, but there are some folks who are accustomed. And I also don't buy the argument that we can't point to people who actually show up at meetings because they learned about it. Many times, folks learn about a meeting and realize, I'm glad to know about it, but I don't need to go hear about it. So, I continue to think that it is worth the, and I don't want to be cavalier with taxpayer dollars, but I continue to think that it is worth the continuation of this expenditure to maintain this precedent. So, I'm still in that camp.
So, Counselor LaBarge, and we'll try and bring this, bring this in towards a vote. Okay?
Carolyn, one of my residents, Mr. Peter Jones, had a letter to the editor in concerns of keeping the notices with the Gazette. He never complains, and he's pretty smart. Is there some way that, and I have to agree with Counselor Bidwell, I think the transparency is very valuable here, because I have several residents on my ward who don't have a computer. Signage, I have to agree with what he's saying, you don't drive by, you don't look at them. And I just think it's very valuable to have that in the Gazette and talking with people. And I've talked with some engineers also already, and they said that they think it should be there.
That was a comment. And so, we'll go to Ward Seven Counselor, Alisa Klein.
I just wanted to say for the record, I've been asking all these questions about how much money we're going to save and not save, but I feel like the city is doing its due diligence with the signs and online lists and abutter letters, and for these purposes, it feels like that is sufficient to me, so I will be supporting this.
For the signs.
Are there any other comments? Counselor Nash?
Yeah, I figured out how I'm going to vote. I'd like to explain. So, yeah, so, the signs are great. And one of the things that, you know, we all know from doing outreach, that you have to hit people three times with information.
Yeah.
You know, that it's got to be a flyer, and they got to hear it from somebody, and maybe that third time is they read it in the paper. And that, that I think that what we're talking about is changing a protocol that's been going on, I don't know how long legal notices have been going on, but I think it's been going on for a really long time. And that before we start chipping away at that, that I think we need to have a more deliberate discussion about how we're going to do this. Two weeks ago, I voted yes with reservations, with the idea that we could get to the discussion tonight. I haven't heard all the answers that I want to hear, so, but I am going to vote no, but with the idea that I'm going to continue this discussion, I'm going to want to talk to the paper, I'm going to want to take up that tour. And also, to, you know, continue talking with our planning department is how we do this outreach. They've been doing a terrific job at getting better at that. And so, maybe there's a way the paper and the planning department, you know, and the legal notices can be done better so that they're easier to find. I don't know. But anyway, I just wanted to explain that. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to explain their vote? Anyone want to make any comment? No, I would say very sincerely, it's good to explain our votes.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate that.
Yes.
It's not even past midnight, we're doing pretty well on time.
Thank you, Carolyn.
For me, I, yeah, I'll just say, for me, I don't, this, if it's a fee we raise from people, then I'm not sure where the city is losing money. If we have a discounted fee, then, if we have a discounted fee, then you can undo the discount, but.
I agree.
That's my opinion. So, I will probably not favor this. Double check, Counselor Murphy had a personal family issue to take care of, so he is excused. We have one abstention on this, so, a quorum of the full council is five, but I believe a zoning ordinance still requires six, or is it five?
It's six.
We want to check that.
Six. It says affirmative vote taken by roll call of six members.
Yep.
And is this a zoning ordinance per se?
Yes. Yes. This is a zoning ordinance, six votes, thank you Laura, very much, will be required to pass it. And I will ask for a roll call.
Okay. Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Dwight.
Recuse.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
No.
Counselor Nash.
No.
Counselor O'Donnell.
No.
Counselor Shara.
No.
Counselor Bidwell.
Excuse me.
Please.
No.
The vote is three in the affirmative, four in the negative, so the ordinance fails in second meeting. We move to 18.069, ordinance to limit a newspaper legal notice requirement for projects that need central business architecture review. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Discussion on this ordinance.
Move your question.
Thank you. Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call whenever we're ready. Same threshold required.
Counselor Dwight.
Recuse.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
No.
Counselor Murphy. Counselor Nash.
No.
Counselor O'Donnell.
No.
Counselor Shara.
No.
Counselor Bidwell.
No.
Counselor Klein, yes.
Yes.
That vote, two in the affirmative and five in the negative, so that, so, any information requests tonight? Business.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.